Okay, I'd like to call, good evening everybody. I'd like to call to order this special Board of Education meeting for June 28th, 2022. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda tonight is public comment, and we do not have any public comment tonight, so we will move on to the public hearing. Notice is hereby given that during the meeting of the Board of Education of the Somers Central School District to be held on June 28th, 2022 at 7:00 PM, the Somers Central School District will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM in the Somers Middle School Library to consider transferring 1,750,000 dollars from the Retirement Contribution Reserve Fund to the Capital Reserve Fund 2022. Just have to say that notice, okay. And now the Central Office Report.
So what I'll have here is the initial look at the district family partnership survey, and let me just go ahead and walk through here. The biggest piece here is to look at kind of the next steps as we'll continue to engage with the schools and the committee on this. So just to give you a sense, the survey was delivered using the web-based tool SurveyMonkey, opened from the 18th of May and closed on the 1st of June. We had just 334 respondents representing the 2,710 children. That does just give us to be able to fall into that 95% confidence level, so with a 5% margin of error. So in essence, when we look at some of the results, and we'll see something that lands at, let's say, the 85% of the folks were saying that were, you know, strongly agree or agree, 95 times out of 100, we're going to be right inside that piece. And then that that number is also going to go from 5% plus or minus, so you'll be looking at that number there. Just a caveat that when we do work with the schools later in the fall, those numbers do fall basically below that 95% confidence interval, more like a 90% confidence interval and 10% margin of error. That just says it's just not as tight as it would be. There's, you know, less respondents per numbers that we need at those schools.
That's by grade, right? Right? But not by aggregate. I'm wondering if the confidence intervals are higher if you aggregate, because I know at the end you break it down by separate grades, so you might have a stronger...
So when we, the aggregate number is better when we disaggregate it down, that's when it becomes more of a problem.
Right, right, right.
What's that?
But, but what I'm saying is if you aggregate it by, like, the middle school has 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, so you could still keep that aggregation without necessarily partitioning out the 6th, the 7th, and the 8th.
And that number represents that when it's middle school, 6th, 7th, 8th, it's a 90% confidence interval with a 10% margin of error.
Good.
So it's there. That's where the value of us having conversation about adding the story and the conversation with the community on there helps, so that don't want to ignore it, but also don't want to over, you know, go on those numbers, because there's definitely pieces that will be different school by school.
Sure.
Hopefully, we get to more of an annual experience with this, so more and more folks will just kind of engage in the survey to hopefully give us that feedback.
Thank you.
So again, engagement tonight is just looking at the overall results kind of at a high level and looking at the future engagement process. We're going to overview the processing of the results with the admin team that'll take place this summer, process the results at each school in the fall as well. That'll be with the faculty at a fall faculty engagement at the schools, and then overview and processing the results with the overall community. That'll be through the Learning Office underneath at Tusker University, kind of a late-fall experience, so we will give as many people we can get involved and be having a conversation with this work. The approach that we take in this work and much of our other work about seeking to get insights on individuals' thoughts and ideas is through appreciative inquiries, the kind of structural model. This is related to that. It's called SOAR, but it stands for Strategic Opportunities, Aspirations, and Results are those areas. And so we get a chance to identify questions for the survey to be discussed in that conversation. So there's many, many questions. We'll look at it to three probably at any of those focus groups that we would process through, and then we'll process through those questions in groups using that framework, and then capture and collect those generated responses from the individuals whomever was at that focus group conversation, and then bring that all together and aggregate that up, and that will be infused into the goals, into those success plans for the schools as they were walked forward with that. Any questions on the process of that one? Here's an example of, not necessarily will be, but an example of. So one of the questions was, "All students are encouraged to enroll in challenging academic experiences." When we look at the data set a little bit later, you'll see that's not at an area we would probably want to be, 80% or so, or four out of five individuals, I guess you would say. We would want to have it be, you know, strongly agree or agree statement. And so this is a number that's low below there, and so the look at that is to not avoid things that we want to get better on. Honestly, it's embracing them and looking at how can we spread the good things that are happening in other areas, or even in that area. Even if it's lower, there's still 60% of people saying, yes, it's good, so what are we doing that's good, how we have more of that? So the idea is looking at strengths, so you would see a group going through about how do we encourage children to enroll in challenging experiences? That's a conversation. That's a piece led in small groups. That information that we start getting some ideas, so how do we encourage that behavior? And so what are some strengths that we do now? Opportunities, what else might we do to encourage our students? So that gets whoever it is, it's either teachers or faculty at building, it's going to be the community at a Tusker University piece, coming again and say, what are things we can encourage to do, ideas from a positive frame set? And what will be different for us when we achieve this goal? So what are, what are we going to see? There are some things that might be different from children's experiences. And then what are some results? What do we want to measure at the end? So what are things we want to measure if we want kids to be encouraged enrolling more? How do we, how do we know that's happening? And so those would be pieces that will be kind of repeated in these different sessions at each building, and then at the Tusker University piece.
And they'll be specific to the different age bands too, right? So for instance, what will be different when we achieve this goal is going to look different if we're talking about second grade versus high school, yeah?
Exactly. And that's where, back to kind of the previous piece where at the end, where the things that they speak about will end up in those school's success plans. And so that's where each building has to have a separate conversation, because it will have more of direct meaning to the school, and it'll align with kind of what's taking place at one of the schools where they're trying to take that next step, so. And then just one more example here about my child's teacher, teachers keeps me informed about how my child's doing in school. So again, a strength is how do you keep parents well informed about how children are doing, their child at school? So this is a staff kind of a conversation. So, okay, you're a teacher, you're, what are you doing that's well right now? Collect that, share those ideas amongst the group. I never thought about that one, that's a good one. And so having that kind of spread, now opportunities, what are effective and efficient ways we might keep parents well informed about their child's practice, or what are some thoughts and ideas and possibilities we can go ahead and think about doing more of that, or maybe for things, or parents in other schools and things, that, oh, my teacher, this is a great opportunity, keeps me plugged in as a parent, and I'm also a teacher in the district, so. And again, the aspirations of what will look like when all the parents of students in your classes feel well informed. So what does that look like? And trying to start kind of painting that picture. And then how will this help the children in your classes succeed? So what will the success stats look like when students are engaged there? So again, that's the process, just two examples, may or maybe not those questions, but a little bit different. You can see if you're working with families who either did answer the survey or are interested in having a conversation. So again, that's another piece. We hope to get more individuals involved, not necessarily the ones that did the survey. If they did, great. If they didn't, then it's a chance to get their voice heard. So we'll start out with the next questions here. Again, I'll look at these. So as I mentioned before, that the identified initial area would be to be at least an 80% with the green and the blue. And then again, this is a piece we're very interested, especially as we look at opening our schools back up, hopefully more fully in the fall than we did this fall. Again, the school is an inviting and a place where parents and guardians belong, so a sense of belonging there.
So these bar charts already is real data?
Yes, sir. Yep. So these are the ones we sent through at the end, kind of towards the end of May through the 1st of June. And then the next one, just speaking about policies and programs that reflect respect and value of the diversity of the family community is there, say that's approximately 85% of individuals that are there in alignment with that one. And again, as Lindsay was saying before, the schools will look at the same questions, but broken out by their school. So they'll see, so is that same thing hold true for this school, or is it a little different? So they'll get that disaggregated information.
I'm just curious, Ray. I know you have the disaggregated information. Did these, like, metrics of agreement seem to change wildly by the different school building?
You know, I, to be frank, I haven't looked at the details and to see if there's a statistically significant difference between the two. Looking at the raw numbers, there's going to be some. And I think the areas that they will mostly fall into would be in the communication area coming out of the classroom. And I think that is a tried and true, or kind of a typical piece where, especially as you get to secondary levels, how can we think about making sure the communication is as strong as it needs to be? I think that would be the most straightforward that I saw with a quick look at it.
Yeah, because I'm wondering if the green, the strongly agree, lives in maybe one band or one cohort of the schools, right? If there's something really impressive that they're doing there that they could then share with the other buildings as an idea for improving, for instance, communication?
Yeah, and that's exactly back to the whole dialogue and that SOAR conversation. So the collective first view on this will be from K through 12 by the leadership and the administrative team. So the principals, assistant principals will be looking and hearing at everybody's different experiences and say, what are you hearing, seeing in your campus, secondary, elementary districts? So they'll have that chance, and then they'll have that knowledge when they go and work with their buildings that they can kind of fill that question when the team comes, say, hey, where are we in relationship to maybe some of the other schools or other, some at other levels and things, so.
That's great.
Ray, are you able to dissect the 334 responses by schools?
Yes.
So you could break this chart into four, for example?
Yeah, and that's what I was trying to describe in the beginning, where when we break that down, we have just a cautionary kind of asterisk, the N is pretty small. You're talking approximately 20-ish kids per grade level that were represented. We want to add the story to, to those stats, so we get even more in there. So the and is there is what we're looking for. We get those, we got an and, then we got kind of a nice conversation going, and then we've got some, we've got some pieces to add to what are sharing strengths and what are sharing ideas.
Ray, the response you've gotten to the survey, is this pretty consistent with prior surveys, or is it more or less, or?
It's, it's very consistent, yeah.
Why do you think the response level is so low?
I would say it's not low from what actual educational surveys are out there that are given for school districts.
It's not low at all, Joe, if you think about it. I mean, Ray, if you go back up to the survey background slide, there's the, if you see the bottom, it says, wait, next one, chose not to respond 54. So 54 people didn't respond. Now, I'm totally speculating.
Just to that one question?
No, no, but hand, there's a reason why I say that. There's, I'm speculating, Joe, but from a research perspective, most of the people in this, a lot of people in this town have multiple kids, right? So it could be one parent responding for multiple kiddos. So that 54 could actually mean that there are 100 kids represented in those responses. I'm making this up, I have no idea.
It's the last question.
But it's a possibility, right? So again, I think you have, this is a decent response.
It is a very decent response, yes. Really?
That's good to know. I looked at it too, and I was like, only 334 parents responded, but...
But if it's one parent from all, I mean, we have, like, I don't know if everybody's going to take it multiple times for the kids.
Multiple kids, yeah.
I mean, it represented 2,710 children, so that's impressive.
You would think you'd get at least 700, 800, double what you got, I don't know.
Well, but what did you say about the 2,700?
That, that represents 2,710 children.
Out of our total 3,000, right?
No, 2,710 is the current enrollment there.
So it doesn't represent them. What he's saying is that it's 330.
Oh, oh, okay. Yeah, I was like, wait, these respondents had a lot of kids.
Maybe you represented 900, that I was there.
I read that wrong, okay.
Maybe 800.
Maybe I can go back and try to clarify.
Got it. But anyway, but that's...
Usually you have like a, you know, the top grade is like 65% is like a reasonable.
They're not even getting that.
At least 800, 700 maybe.
So let me just try to clarify, so 2,710 is the population?
Okay, yes.
The sample of that population is 334 respondents.
Could be more than.
Not the case. Their family, parents, somebody has four children.
Families, I don't know if it was grandparents or...
My wife responded for three kids.
Three different times?
So one response. No, only one response, but three kids.
The same thing, like, that's for that 54.
So you put them up by two or three.
Now, even you figure that, if everybody's responding for three kids, you should have 700 at least. I don't know.
No, you would hope so.
Yeah, no, you're right, you're right.
So that's where we're doing at the high level that we're at. We have enough of an N that says we have pretty good confidence that...
All right, so you're saying the statisticians will tell you because of the sample you have that's pretty representative of the whole district.
Yep, and that's that 95% confidence and 5% margin. It's when we break it down by school, then it gets a little bit shakier.
That's why I was bugging him about like middle school, elementary, whatever.
Right. Yeah, all right, that's helpful, thank you, that context.
Let me drop into, just, I think the next one's just welcome at PTA and parent group meetings again there. See those numbers? School keeps all families informed about important events, again, a little bit over 90%. School communities families in multiple ways, again, over 95%.
Yeah, all those new things, your podcasts and everything, emails and Facebook and...
Talk to a school administrator, want to need to, so almost 90%. Child's teacher communicates with me on a regular basis, about 60%. So this would be an example of where we were before. I would see this or another question like it going through that, kind of that SOAR process. So what strengths? Because 60% of the people said, yeah, strongly agree or agree. So let's, let's get that out, so we can say, well, what are we doing well? And how do we continue to expand upon that, either within the school, or the, you know, secondary or elementary, or K through 12? So that's the part about having that conversation about what's working well within teachers and across teachers as well too. So that gets a chance to then idea what opportunities can we create here, and what do we hopefully aspire to be, and what results would we like to see on that? And then again, the buildings will look at their specific numbers there.
It would be great to see details on specifically what communication people valued also, right? Because I'm certain that we know that sometimes people call home when it's a negative thing, but there's also times when people call home with a positive thing. So I wonder if we can even dig deeper into some of these questions to figure out where in the community folks are happy with the communication they're receiving, and what type of communication they'd like to see more of, as opposed to just like communication at large. Do you know what I mean?
And I'll go back to the O and SOAR, and that would be an opportunity, a conversation to have with a group of people and saying, so you've had your kids at the high school now, and it's like, what worked while you're there? And as you're, as long as you're here, can you tell us what worked well at the other grade levels with your kids as well too? So those are the opportunities we want to have parents say, oh, I totally forgot about that, but man, when that happened, that was fantastic. Can we do more of that? And that's a piece we want to capture through that. And then, you know, they'll capture that narrative, bring it forth.
There was, sorry, there was no comments though on this?
There's two open-ended questions to basically at the end, like, how would you like to move it forward? Support the district, what are the things that we're doing well?
Not for each question, got it, okay.
So it's just at the end, yep.
Now, Ray, have we ever done a survey or questionnaire through students passing to the parents, required them to hand back in so to get 100% response?
So what we do, we do, we've historically done annual surveys with our children, in particular 30th through 12th grade, on engagement. So we on an annual basis do an engagement survey with our children, and, and we do get a very high response, that's, you know, if students are absent and things like that, we don't, but it's a high 90% kind of a percentage participation there.
I mean, this type of question, almost you could do that.
Okay, I think you face saying, have you considered using like a paper survey that the students take home, their parents have to fill it, and they bring it back to try to get 100% response rate? That's right.
Yeah, we found anytime we send paper home, it doesn't usually effectively increase any of our response rate.
Yeah, but the student in between might help, so I got to bring this back to teacher, so the parents would have to do it.
If you tie a grade to it.
Yeah. Remember that. When we take a look at the survey numbers and the skip numbers, everyone started getting bored and distracted at question nine. Because you have 22 skipped at nine, 22 at 10, 22 at 11, right? And then it progresses, then more people started to get distracted at question 16, or question, sorry, 15.
That's interesting, yeah, as they go along.
Attention span?
So you got to keep it brief when you do a survey, lesson learned.
And that is one of the pieces where it's helpful using the AI within, within the SurveyMonkey that does let us get a decent idea of completion rate. It's pretty high. And then also what we'll probably do next year, we try to stay away from a little bit this year's forced answers, so we'll probably do a little bit of that more. It's always a dicey rule, do you, do you drop more off, or like, forget, I'm not going to answer it, and if I'm not going to answer, then I'm done. Versus that people fully went through, even if they skipped it, they fully went through. The completion rate on this was exactly how many actually opened it up, completed it. That's really high. Yes, more skipped it, but if I would have said on every single question, you would have said you must complete before you can go on, people would have said, x, n, I'm done, and then never finished it. And then that data set wouldn't even be anything I could use, because he only got through question five, they didn't even read it, then make a conscious choice to say, I'm going to move on. That's a very different story then versus, I got to five, and I'm just going to stop the survey. Shouldn't be really using survey results unless the survey is at least read through and completed versus, you know, so I kick, you know, somebody said, skip it.
Well, but by that argument, not filling it out or filling out half of it doesn't matter, because you're tossing out the, I mean, if we were going to do an analysis on this to Nick's point, we would dump the 31 that skipped question 18 from all of them, because you couldn't, you couldn't evaluate. I mean, if we're talking psychometric properties, which we're not.
Correct, and so I think you just clarified it. I'm not, I'm looking at a high-level survey from 20 kids at a grade level to start a conversation.
Right.
So, that's it.
No, no, I'm just saying, like, we're not having that conversation, but like, if you wanted to be more...
Nope, nope, just, here I am, just, just old Ray, just do want to have a conversation with the community.
But I wonder, Ray, if you could chunk them, right, by factors, right? So if it would be like, if four factors hung together in what you're asking, and it seemed to people like conceptually that they're really only answering, you know what I mean? Like, I feel like that's a different feeling for people, to do like a Likert scale with like chunks of like four different things. I don't know.
Yet again, I, I don't have anybody on team of second magician, I'm, I'm a, you know, lowly superintendent, and so just trying to get a sense of people and get a sense of people are going to have a conversation, so.
Yeah.
Academic standards, understanding there certainly is a, is a piece that we've looked at there. Again, here, information, communication, and again, we see some of these themed questions that do start, I'm sure Lindsay was speaking about that, that communication or that bucket of communication themes, some of those questions certainly fall inside of there. Students challenged to do their best in that regard, so about 75% of students inside of there, so.
That's a great response, by the way.
Yeah.
Social emotional support, again, nearly 80% of folks are identifying that as, and counseling are there.
Coming off of the COVID year, that's also a really stellar response.
Yes.
And then encouraged to enroll in challenging academic experiences and things, so again, 70% there of that enrollment piece. Input from families again, just about 80% in contributions and things, especially in a year when we've been not having people come to schools and things like that, it was, I think that was all right.
Yeah.
Connecting me with somebody when I'm not sure how can we connect? So again, parental support, communication, and those, those kind of pieces of information flowing there, so. Positive work relationship with child's teachers, again, so again, strong there. My child feels safe at school, just short of 90%.
That's good.
If, I'd say behaviors reported, confident the problem will be taken care of, just about 80%, right there, as soon as possible. Ensure all students follow the rules, listed out there, just about 70%. And then just a little bit over 80%, just satisfy the quality of the school, and then the last one here, recommend the school to family and friends with children, literally around 80% there.
That's good to see, a high satisfaction rate.
Yeah, and then again, we'll kind of watch that out to schools, and the schools will look at that information there. Again, race and ethnicity, this is a piece where we did put in prefer not to answer, and you could see 54 folks chose not to, anything, they just totally skipped that question.
So do those 54 folks count for that, that section at the top, or that's in addition to the section at the top?
In addition to the ones that, so, yeah.
So it's 20% of the people that responded preferred not to answer, but then there were additional at 54?
Correct.
So if you were going to...
Yep.
You guys have obviously seen these surveys before, but I don't know. It's, it seems consistent, like 20% of the people, 15 to 20% are just unhappy.
Yeah.
Is there, is that normal in what your experience is, or?
I would say it's, it's typical from an educational perspective that you're going to see that what happens actually is you step away from surveys like this, and you let folks to give feedback at the state level, and then give feedback at the national level, it continues to drop. But that number, like you said, about 15 to 20% is, is fairly there. That's where again, when we look at that and say, oh, then the other ones that are maybe at 60%, we want to tap into the 60% of folks, say, yeah, it's working well. Well, tell us more about that, because we want to do more of that, so we can get those numbers up to closer to 80, 85%. That's exactly what we want to do. The only way to do that, we believe, is to really invite people in to have a conversation. So there's an example, tell us about a time when you had great communications coming out of the classroom. What's a great strength? And you got to, oh, it's three years ago, great, tell us about it. It doesn't have to be today or anything like that. So that's the part where we know the, the story that goes along with these rudimentary stats is really what we're looking for.
One way, I think, this monkey thing may have actually solution for it is, if you post some space for parents to sort of draft their own survey question they are interested or dying to know, okay? At the end, say, maybe each, you know, give them three question, spaces to do that. So I would love to know how the student responds to certain things or whatever. The survey question like you have, in addition to that, from the parents, create that question, you collect them in. That question could be not only telling some of the response from parents, but also useful for the next survey you're going to do.
Sure.
You can select those questions and put it in, okay? We will find them out.
Interesting.
You follow me?
Yeah, interesting thought, sort of like, what's something you wish we had asked, but we didn't?
Yeah, yeah, that, that, I think it's a feedback.
That's like a very common end-of-survei question. Everybody does the, what do you wish we asked?
Because some parents may say, well, I really want to know how everybody else feels. I have this, you know, question.
Yeah, but to that point too, I mean, I think, Ray, in my opinion, my personal opinion, I think that surveys are really only, really valuable if you follow it up with a conversation. So the general questions are lovely, because then you do have that meaningful conversation, because satisfied with this quality of the school, it could mean anything, and it's totally subjective. The day that the person took it, they can be especially cranky, or maybe they got a raise and they're really happy. So like the, the, all of that sort of subjectivity comes out. I think that using it in this way, I think now the hard part is going to be, how do you gather a representative group of people to have the conversation that you get the details that you need to, you know, continuously improve? So.
Just to be clear, SurveyMonkey has nothing to do with monkeypox, correct?
And the last piece here just again demonstrates a relatively close sampling of the groups across each grade level, again, approximately 20 to 25 students across those areas, so.
Always more of the younger grades.
Yeah, although in this case, it's pretty good representation from, I mean, like a 10th grade.
Yep.
You have 30% in the high school, right? Yeah.
That's great. I mean, even the senior parents.
20%.
Got some.
Right?
At least there was some voice in there from every single group.
Oh, yeah, look at that.
Stuff, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
Interesting.
Running out of colors.
Pretty.
So again, just to kind of bring it back to close, where we'll go next is the conversation with the administrative team in the summertime to dive a little bit deeper into this, kind of by their buildings, so the building administrators will get their information broken out and kind of disaggregated that way. And then we'll go through some of those questions from our perspectives that we shared today, then draft and develop some other ones that will be going ahead and working, buildings will work with their building leadership teams first, so they're familiar with the data set. Then when they bring their entire faculty together, that there'll be, you know, six, eight individuals who've already seen the data set, they've been part of developing the questions that can help them facilitate it with their peers, the rest of that. And then that's where the information starts getting captured and brought back together.
Okay.
That completes, then we'll be going ahead and doing a kind of a K through 12 Tusker University experience there. And then also, we always use our, use the district meeting. It's a small group, about 12 or so individuals, but that I meet on a monthly basis for the PTA Leadership Council. And so we'll spend some time working with the PTA Leadership Council on this as well, too. So we'll have a fair amount of small groups, even if it's a large group, like a faculty all broken down into small groups, so we get voiced in the room by everybody who's there.
So that's where, for family members that want to be involved in the conversation, that's where the Tusker U.
Yes.
Or if they're involved in the PTA, that would give them the opportunity.
PTA there. We'll more likely work with our PTA so they can invite it all to their distribution lists, so we get as many people involved in, in that conversation and get that.
What's the target? How many people are you looking for to attend that? What would be your ideal goal?
So fortunately, we have a, you know, we'll have a captive audience with the staff, so we're going to have a, hopefully close to 100% there. If we can at least get close to the number that put in here, that would be ideal. If we got, you know, 300 reps, that would be ideal.
So we think we could facilitate that meeting about 300?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, it's just a matter of breaking that down into, you know, smaller group sections and facilitating that work. And but if we have multiple opportunities, like at the building, if the building's like, look, I got a lot of, PTA, most of the times in the fall can get a nice big group. I've got 25 parents here tonight to talk about all the PTA business, and then we finish the meeting with something like that, then we can kind of capture students and families like that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And you could even do some sessions on Zoom to make, like, would you be able to have some of the conversations in Zoom when you do it, or?
You know, I hadn't thought about it. I guess you knew anything on Zoom, what we're trying to look at as much as in person. So, well, we typically try to have movement from different groups back and forth and stuff. We, we did do some things in Zoom this year and tried some different things at the high school, some different things at Tusker University, and we, we just didn't get a draw. Many people, when we hold any event, so people, a lot of people were coming to different celebrations at the end of the year and things like that. And so, you know, sports awards, banquets, or just the different things. And so I think people want to be out and about, close to each other. But if, if we can, and there's a need, we'll certainly make it happen.
Oh, good. Yeah, no, I only ask because there had been a number of different meetings that I remember having more people participated on Zoom than when they had been in person just because of childcare, you know, or whatever.
It makes them more accessible for people who are working or have other things going on. They're in the city, they're far away, and so they can't come back for 5 o'clock. But you don't want to keep the teachers here until all hours of the evening, and you want to be respectful.
Yeah. If you're trying to get 300 and having trouble, then maybe one.
Yep, yeah, we'd certainly spin that around, look at some different ways.
As much as I'm sure the whole community is very busy watching our board meetings, is there any way for us to communicate this data out to the community in a different way than we're doing right now? The board, can we help communicate it some way so that you can receive the feedback and you can make sure that those 334 people show up?
Yeah, so we'll be working through the fall with our Communications Officer, Amanda, there to start impacting. We've already talked to our PTA leaders and let him know that this is the path that we would be heading on. Right now, it's a matter of taking the summer to go through administration. The fall, we'll go through the building staff and faculty. At that time, we'll be then kind of advertising it out to the PTAs and the families, say, be on the lookout for an opportunity to come and kind of have your voice heard through coffee and conversation kind of a thing, and here's the topic.
Yeah. No, because that's a great thing to market out as far as opportunity for people. Okay, like, let your voice be heard, have it, you know, participate in it right now instead of just complaining and one-off, you know, things. This is not well, but at least come here, share the conversation, what you've been experiencing, what you've been seeing, and allow the educators to take that back and figure out ways to improve it, right? And digest it and see if it's a one-off thing or whatever, or if there's multiple common themes in that. But yeah, I think the marketing on that stuff is key to try to get as many people as possible. Yeah, I mean, I think we keep also mentioning it here at the board table, again, because we do have a massive audience of people watching.
This is correct.
Weekly basis.
Sign autographs.
And fortunately, we do have, and we are anticipating seeing, just because some households have changed their working arrangements, that we will have some folks who, because of their flexible schedules, could be able to come in a little bit more. We started seeing that a little bit at the end of the year. For example, when we had our field days and things, we had really strong volunteerism in the schools from our parents. And it was great to see. And so we would anticipate that some of that's probably going to continue. And so, hey, you want to come and have a conversation? And if we do it at different times and things like that, those would be pieces we can do. Because again, it's, it's not a delivery, it's not a presentation, it's really a few short minutes, and then let's get into the work and roll up our sleeves and let's, let's kind of understand what folks are thinking. So it really is coming and talking for 90 minutes and, and leaving your kind of best thoughts about improvement moving forward. So, so we, we do anticipate we'll get some more folks as we carry what happened through the spring, hopefully into the fall.
Great.
And then ultimately, this will then work its way into the 23, 24 kind of success plans officially. I would anticipate that as administrators look at this this summer, they work with their teacher later in the fall, they're already going to start moving on some things. But instead of going back to the 22, 23 goals, then they'll probably go ahead and add those in the 23, 24, and then we'll just kind of keep that moving forward as it keeps coming in, so be in place there. But they, I'm sure they won't halt and stop. It'll just, it'll be along the way, and they'll kind of keep that stuff moving, so.
And then we would expect to see movement also in that professional development plan that's coming up in our board action, yeah?
In the what? I'm sorry?
In the professional development plan that's coming up in our board action, right? Changing the way that we're working with our educators and helping provide feedback and.
Yeah, and I think that those are pieces that are embedded in a lot of that work now. And actually, there's a few key projects that are going out of Learning Office that Claire and I were talking about earlier today about just providing meaningful feedback on evidence-based learning and things like that for the kids and stuff. So, yeah. Thank you very much, honey.
Okay. All right, next item, we are in acceptance of the warrants report, statements of revenues, treasurer's report, and budget status report. And then we have board action. Be it resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, hereby approves a memorandum of agreement between the Somers Central School District and the Somers School Related Professionals SSRP dated June 22, 2022 regarding the position of the courier custodial worker.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Then we have personnel consent agenda. Be it resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, hereby approves the attached personnel agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I know we don't usually talk about the personnel consent agenda, but I do want to highlight because we did miss an important tenure a couple weeks ago, that we do have a recognition of tenure this evening that will come up next year, saying that publicly.
Correct.
So everyone feels seen and appreciated.
All right. And we voted, right, I said yes?
Yes.
And then moving on to CSE, CPSE meeting recommendations. Be it resolved that the Board of Education, having received copies of the recommendations of the meetings as listed on the attached memo, hereby approves the same.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Business consent agenda. Be it resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, hereby approves the attached business agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Yeah, did you have anything that you needed to elaborate on?
The only thing I just wanted to kind of highlight is earlier this evening, we had the public hearing for the transfer of funds from the Retirement Reserve to the newly established Capital Reserve. So that resolution is on the business agenda in the amount of 1.75 million. That, in addition to the 1.7 million dollars that we transferred at the last board meeting. So now we just have, just shy of 3.5 million dollars in the Capital Reserve Fund. And we'll continue to look to, to fund that to a level, and then hopefully ask the voters, probably, hopefully next May, to approve the usage of those funds for the capital improvements that we've been discussing.
Okay.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. All right, next up, professional development plan for 21 to 24. Be it resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, hereby accepts the 2021 to 2024 professional development plan as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay. And the Superintendent Contract Amendment. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Somers Central School District hereby approves the amendment to the contract between the Somers Central School District and Dr. Ray Blanch dated June 28, 2022, and hereby authorizes the Board of Education President to execute same.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.